Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
I'm doing okay. Do you see my video at all?
No.
Or is my videos actually turned off, I guess?
Right.
That's perfect. I don't want anybody to see me anyway.
You still in your PJs or what?
No, no, maybe I'm just running around on nothing, so. That's a bad thought, isn't it? So, is anybody else on yet?
Yes.
Because I don't see.
I'm here, Mike. Hi.
Oh, hi, how are you?
Well, hi, everybody.
Hi, Kate.
Where's Chris?
Oh, Lynn?
Yes.
This is Vicki, and I'm here in the office.
Yes, I see you.
Okay, thank you.
It's 3 o'clock. Are we ready to go, Gency?
Lynn, can I have just one minute, please?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
All right, let's call the Wasco County Planning Commission meeting to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Vicki Ashley, present. Chris Sharnow.
Present.
Mike Davis. Looks like Mike is off. Kate Willis.
Present.
Lynn McIntyre.
Present.
Sure, it looks like Mike Davis, Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Hargrave are joining right now.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, and Commissioner Hargrave. Commissioner Hargrave.
Need to unmute yourself.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
And then for staff, I'm putting back Kelly Houseley-Lawler.
Gency Smith, 248.
Okay, and I'm also here. Office system.
We're getting a lot of feedback.
Do you have a speaker on in the boardroom there, Kelly? That might be it.
It's probably good practice for everyone who's not speaking to mute.
Okay, at this time, we'll have public comment for items that are not being heard or discussed elsewhere on the agenda. And we'll have a maximum of 3 minutes per speaker. Does anyone wish to speak about anything not on the agenda? No? Okay. We are going to, at this time, have the review and approval of past minutes, October 5th. Did everyone have reviewed the minutes and have any, anybody have any additions or corrections?
I move the minutes to be accepted as presented.
All right, nice second.
Thank you, and moved and seconded. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed, I'm signed. Okay, minutes approved. We are going to change the order of the agenda to accommodate members of the public who are in attendance, who may not want to stick around for a discussion of bylaws amendments, so let us move at this time to the hearing. We will open the Planning Commission quasi-judicial hearing on Agenda Item 921-18-0086. PLNG, a request for approval of the following. One, a comprehensive plan amendment, change a legal parcel designated Forest to Forest Farm. Two, exception to statewide planning goal for forest lands. Three, zone change, change a legal parcel, zoned F2, Forest Zone to Farm, Forest Farm FF10, so on a non-resource, and remove it from resource zone protections. Subject property is located along and south of Seven Mile Hill Road, southeast of its intersection with Richard Road, approximately 4.3 miles northwest of the DOWS, Oregon, specifically described as map in Tax Lot 2 North, 12 East, Section 22, Tax Lot 4400, Tax Account Number 884. Criteria for Approval Remand Hearing includes the criteria for approval of land use decisions, which includes Oregon Revised Statute 197.732, Goal Exceptions, Oregon Administrative Rules, Chapter 660, Division 4, specifically OAR 660-004-0025, lands physically developed to other uses, and OAR 660-004-0028, land irrevocably committed. Planning Goal 2, Part 2, Exceptions, OAR 660-015-00002. Chapter 660, Division 4, Interpretation of Goal 2 Exception Process, and Planning Goal 4, Forest Lands, OAR 660-015-0004. The scope of this hearing is strictly limited to the issues that were the basis for remand, specifically issues raised under OAR 660-004-0025 and OAR 660-004-0028. Proposal must comply with applicable provisions contained in Wasco County Comprehensive Plan and state law. Generally, unless otherwise noted, if a request is found to be consistent with the LUTO, it is considered consistent with the comprehensive plan. Procedure will follow is, first, disclosure of interest, ex parte contact, or potential conflicts. Then reading of the rules of evidence. Planning Department will present their report, staff will present their report. And those who are already on the record, who wish to speak in favor of the proposal, proposal will have a chance to do so. And then those who are already on the record, who wish to speak in opposition of the proposal, may do so. Will allow for applicant rebuttal. Then we will have any further questions by commissioners of staff, proponent, or opponent. And then we'll close the hearing and record and begin deliberation. And during deliberation, only commissioners or staff, if questioned, can contribute to that discussion. So, this time, disclosure of interest, ex parte contact, or potential conflicts. Does any planning commissioner wish to disqualify themselves for any personal or financial interest in this matter? Does any planning commissioner wish to report any significant ex parte contact or pre-hearing contacts? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any planning commissioner to hear this matter? Is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of Wasco County in this matter? For the record, have any planning commissioners conducted a site visit to the subject property? Okay, anyone can speak for or against the proposal today. However, only those who have party status will be able to appeal a decision reached by this commission. A party stat, a party is defined in Section 1.090 as A, the applicant and all owners or contract purchasers of record, as shown in the files of the Wasco County Assessor's Office of the property, which is the subject of the application. B, all property owners of record, as provided in a previously stated, within the notification area, as described in Section 2.080A2 of the property, which is the subject of the application. C, a citizen advisory group pursuant to the citizen involvement program, approved pursuant to ORS 197.160. D, any affected unit of local government, or public district, or state, or federal agency. And E, any person or his representative who is specifically, personally, or adversely affected in the subject matter, as determined by the approving authority. If you want party status, please say so at the beginning of your testimony. At the end of the public testimony, the Planning Commission will deliberate about granting party status to each person who requested it. The rules of evidence are as follows. A, no person shall present irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. B, evidence received shall be of a quality that reasonable persons rely upon in the conduct of their daily affairs. C, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria applicable to the subject hearing, or to criteria that the party believes apply to the decision. D, failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity may preclude raising it before the Land Use Board of Appeals. E, failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow Wasco County to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party of record may request that the record remain open for at least 7 days prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing. Failure of persons to participate in the public hearing, either orally or in writing, precludes that person's right of appeal to the Board of County Commissioners. Written testimony submitted prior to the hearing constitutes participation in the hearing. So at this time, will we, we can have the staff report, Daniel?
Yes, Karen McIntyre, one second, I'll load it up. All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Daniel Doherty, Senior Planner, Wasco County, and I was the reviewing, or have been the reviewing planner on this request. So findings within the staff report have been limited to information within the original record and information submitted with Mr. Wilson's remand hearing request. Since the submission of Mr. Wilson's remand hearing request, soil data and maps on July 13, 2021, no additional information has been submitted with regards to this specific request. And so before I begin, I just want to tell everyone that there's going to be quite a few maps, so if you note a map that you want to look at later on, just try to mark the slide number, we can go back to it later, so. All right. So the agenda, we're going to go ahead and briefly cover the overview of the request and area involved. And we're going to briefly talk about the history and scope of the remand hearing itself. And then we're going to go ahead and just dive into the actual criteria, Chapter 660, Division 4, 0025 and 0028. And then we'll, I'll provide the Planning Commission options. All right. So as you can see, the request is for a comprehensive plan amendment to change a legal parcel designated Forestry to Forest Farm. An exception to statewide plan goal for forest lands and zone change. Change a legal parcel, zone Forest F2 Zone to Forest Farm FF10 Zone, Non-R resource. So essentially, remove it from resource zone protections. All right, so we're just going to dive into the subject area, vicinity map, subject parcels, surrounding zones, and vegetation really quick. All right. So it's, the subject parcel is located at Township 2 North, Range 12 East, Section 22, Tax Lot 4400. 40 acres in size. I do want to provide a staff report correction, so the acreage provided within the staff report range is from 40.6 to 40.13 acres. And so for the record, the acres listed within the last reported partition flat, recorded number 2017-003563, provides that the subject parcel is 40.1 acres. So this slight acreage discrepancy within the staff reports inconsequential to staff's findings. But for the duration of this hearing, the size of the parcel will be 40 acres, for ease of reference. So the subject parcel and parcels to the south and southwest are within the Forest F2 Zone. Parcels to the north, northwest, and east are within the Forest Farm FF10 Zone and rural residential zones, as provided on the map. Subject parcel vegetation. This image was provided by the 2018 Oregon Statewide Imagery Program, and the image provides a fairly updated view of vegetation growth on the parcel. You can see standard tree and shrub vegetation exists on the northwest portion of the property, but generally, tree growth is located on the east, south, and southwest sides of the parcel. So this image was submitted with the applicant's remand request packet. You can see existing tree growth in areas without or lacking significant tree vegetation. Those are fairly self-evident. So of note, the Bonneville Power Administration, or BPA, line easements is fairly obvious, running northwest to southeast, very clear and visible on this map. All right, so we're going to go ahead and dive quickly into the history and scope of this remand hearing. So, the initial application was submitted in 2018. The Wasco County Planning Commission recommended approval, April of 2019. The hearing was scheduled before the Wasco County Board of Commission on June 2019, where the commission approved the requests. The decision was appealed to the Williams Board of Appeals, or LUBA, and that's, the opinion was to remand the decision on January 14, 2020. And Mr. Wilson submitted the remand request on June 13, 2021. So the scope of this remand hearing, so staff findings and recommendations for this hearing are limited to OAR 660-004-0025 and 0028, as noted earlier. All right, so I'm not going to go ahead and read this verbatim. Essentially, specifically, the rule requires specific areas to be shown on the map are describing key to appropriate findings of fact, that the applicant needs to identify the extent and location of existing physical development, and identify the uses allowed by the applicable, well, uses allowed by the applicable goals to which an exception is being taken shall not be used to justify a physically developed exception. So essentially, the applicant has to demonstrate that the parcel is physically developed to a point where uses that are allowed under, in this case, Goal 3, are excluded. So this is the information that was used in the analysis. So information concerning the physically developed area of the subject parcel was provided by the original record, Wasco County GIS data, and additional evidence submitted by the applicants. So the applicant provided specific estimates. The applicant submitted the following site map, as seen, illustrating power lines, structures, public roads, and private driveways. So it's important to remember that roads and access drives cannot be used to justify a physically developed exception. Additionally, the applicant provided fire, fuel, break estimates for roads and access drives, as well as power lines and structures, and calculating the percentage of physically developed area. Now, the applicant estimates that 32.81% of the subject parcel is physically developed. But of note, the applicant's site map was not to scale. It did not illustrate the estimated distances of utility lines on the actual site map, or provide illustrations of fire, fuel, break, or maintenance buffer zones. Additionally, specific land use criteria used to support the 50-foot buffer zone requirements for the driveway easements or Seven Mile Hill Road were not provided. So staff analyzed the required fire safety criteria and provided the fire buffer zone area calculation methodology and estimates in the staff report. Staff utilized Chapter 10 Fire Safety Standards to calculate fire buffer zone areas for existing structures and access drives. Safety standards to calculate fire buffer zone areas for existing structures and access drives are found in Sections 10.120 and 10.140. These require a 50-foot fire fuel break area for structures and a 10-foot fire fuel break area for private access drives. So staff analysis did not address the unconfirmed 50-foot fire maintenance buffer zone. Staff didn't analyze the unconfirmed 50-foot fire fuel break for Seven Mile Hill Road or the driveway easements. However, staff did confirm the public road maintenance area with Wasco County Public Works Director, Arthur Smith. So Director Smith provided the following comment on November 15, 2021, with regards to the maintenance easement area, or the maintenance area for Seven Mile Hill Road. Quote, "We do not have a fire break rule. The county is obligated to prevent obstruction of a publicly dedicated road, but there is no language about fire protection. We try to keep a clear zone of 4 to 6 feet on each side of the county road. This is more for vehicular safety than for fire protection. We have the right to remove trees, bushes, and other vegetation if we deem it necessary for safety, or if the tree represents a road hazard." End quote. So staff also confirmed by phone Wasco Electric Cooperative with regards to the 15-foot easement, maintenance easement for power lines. Alright. So given the um aforementioned information and criteria that staff used, staff estimates the that approximately eighteen percent of the subject parcels physically developed and no longer available for resource use. Staff's approximations were based on, again, best available uh information and applicable land use criteria. Uh the estimates do not necessarily reflect absolute accuracy and should not be considered to unconditional negate the applicant's submitted calculations for physical development. So based on the eighteen percent estimation, in order to approve a physically developed exception, the county must find that the property has been physically developed to such an extent that all goal three or four resource uses are concluded. Uh that's Sam Green versus uh Clackamas County. Um based on the facts, analysis and findings, the parcel does not meet the required standards of OAR six sixty zero zero four zero zero two five. And staff recommends a denial of the request under the physically developed exception. So moving on to OAR six six or six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eights, uh again, I won't read it verbatim. The bottom line is is that the impracticable uh standard doesn't necessarily mean impossible. Um impractical meaning not capable of being carried out in practice. Capable meaning having ability or able to do things well. And in practice, meaning by the usual method customer convention. And so the bottom line is is that in order for the applicants to demonstrate that uh the property is irrevocably irrevocably committed to other uses, uh the standard isn't necessarily impossible, it's impracticable. So practicability of allowing uses can be demonstrated through existing adjacent uses and a wide range of other relevant factors. The demonstration of these uses and factors laid out um in the room is for the most part laid out in the remaining subsections of uh zero zero two eight. And so we're gonna be talking about those subsections. Alright, so uh subsection zero zero two eight two A um requires the applicant provide the characteristics of the exception area. And so staff's analysis um was in concern of physical development and fire buffer maintenance area estimates um of the of the subject parcel and undeveloped areas of the subject parcel and specifically the soils. So we already covered down on the physical developments. As a reminder, staff has already provided uh the brief overview of the physical developments and found that roughly eighteen percent of the overall parcel was physically developed. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to the undeveloped areas and soils. So as seen on this uh map, uh you can see a delineated non fish bearing wetlands. Um for the most part in the center of the parcel. Additionally, you can see where areas of property are farmed. So the applicant provides that there's no history of crop use with the exception of grass hay grown in the pasture area, which is uh apparent on this map. The dense tree growth again is can be found at the eastern edge, uh south and southwest areas of the parcel. Alright, so the remand materials contained uh what is known as an Order One Soil Survey. The staff report titles this soil survey as the Wilson Order One Soil Survey. Order one or first order surveys are made uh of very detailed information about soils generally in small areas uh such as the park subject parcel. Um Order One Soil Surveys are more specific to a given area than an Order Three Soil Survey. The previous application used soil data derived from the nineteen eighty-two Order Three United States Department of Agriculture USDA uh soil survey of Wasco County, Oregon Northern Park. So Wilson Order One Soil Survey. Um the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, the LCD, uh Farm Forest Specialist Hillary Foot, found the soil survey to be complete and consistent with reporting requirements for agricultural soils capability. The Order One Soil Survey was conducted by soil scientist uh Gary Kitzrow, um MS certified professional soil classifier, uh certified professional soil scientists. Essentially, there's no indication uh that the information provided within the soil report is incomplete or inaccurate. And staff means the facts, findings and conclusions within the Wilson Order One Soil Survey to be complete, consistent and accurate. So specifically, the Wilson Order One Soil Survey provided soil testing analysis for twenty-three specific areas on the subject parcel. Where fa- findings um found that the USDA Order Three survey appears to overrepresent uh WAMAC soil mapping units uh quote, "Given the confirmed diverse and wide range of landforms and geomorphic surfaces in this specific reg- region," end quote. So this is a map that staff put together. Colorizing uh the soil suitability of the parcel, uh that really to better illustrate the map soils. Um uh illustrating the generally unsuitable soils, uh class seven and eight, which are made up of skyline, uh BODL and infrastructure soils and generally suitable soils, um class four and class six, which are primarily made up of WAMAC mapping units, while they're all made up of WAMAC mapping units. Um. So as you can see from the map, a preponderance of the subject parcel of fifty-one point eight percent, twenty point seven nine acres is made up of um shallow, generally unsuitable soils. Um in order to illustrate uh specific details about soils, uh staff utilized a soil survey, single phase interpretation sheets in Oregon, um or better known as the green sheets. Uh regarding the use of the green sheets, uh staff, I want to correct uh the staff report record. On page fifty-eight of the staff report in that or attachment C, um I provided that no information concerning the skyline soil mapping unit can be located in the green sheets and an analysis of the WAMAC skyline complex was provided. Uh new information from Mr. Kitzrow was added the day before the planning commission packet was ready. And I I failed to delete that specific um point within the uh staff report. So in lieu of the WAMAC skyline complex uh information, it's Mr. Kitzrow emailed details of the skyline soil mapping unit. So on November twenty-six twenty twenty-one, Mr. Kitzrow provided the following comments concerning the skyline soil mapping unit. Quote, "The green sheets do not tabulate the forestry site index tables because skyline is a non-commercial forest soil." As a former USDA NRCS soil scientist here in Oregon and as a a degree forester as well, when employed as a USDA scientist, we left the green pages blank when there was no commercial timber uh producing potential or no trees within the correct age or class or dominance class uh to measure and assign an assign a valid site index or uh mensuration estimate. Skyline has never been cited as a commercial forest soil and predictably uh no proper trees are 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 available to measure as well. Uh since the soil skyline is the dominant soil in the subject parcel, a preponderance of the legal lot of record is not a commercial timber timber site. This follows suit for agriculture as well, which is demonstrated in the capability class assignment, end quote. And you can see the parcel also contains uh roughly forty-eight point two percent uh or nineteen point three four acres of class four and class six uh WAMAC units. So as provided in the green sheets, these soil mapping units are generally suitable and have the capability to provide um thirty thirty-five bushes per acre winter wheat and one point tons per acre of uh grass hay. Uh it also has the potential to provide twenty and forty-nine cubic feet uh per acre of under a supine. Uh no windbreaks are listed within the green sheets regarding the generally suitable WAMAC soils. And um these soils are also listed as fair or poor or generally have fair or poor ratings within the green sheets for uh wildlife suitability. Uh so the next subsection is zero zero two eight two B, which requires the applicant provide characteristics of adjacent lands. And in this case, staff provided um soil analysis of adjacent lands as well as the general land use history uh use. Alright, so adjacent property soil analysis, so soil data um for, well, for the surrounding uh community um is provided by the nineteen eighty-two published Order Three USDA Soil Survey of Wasco County, Oregon Northern Park. Um the soil mapping units is illustrated actually reflect Mr. Kitzrow's commentary concerning the prevalence of WAMAC mapping units throughout the area. Um importantly, the map also demonstrates that the land designation um for a property doesn't necessarily equate uh to a drastic difference uh in the soil mapping unit. And so for example, uh this map provides that four distinct uh tax lots, uh three of which are in the forest farm zone and one of which is within the forest F two zone, all primarily contain the same um forty-nine C WAMAC soil mapping unit. And so in examining uh the general land use and history of of the area, um as this map indicates, the lands to the northeast and west, the proposed exception area have primarily been divided into smaller parcels. Um smaller units of land relative to rural development. Roughly ten acres or less. Large majority of these parcels uh were created uh prior to state or countywide zoning regulations. And they were created through subdivision. Um of the four major subdivisions in this area, three were planted between nineteen oh eight and nineteen twelve and the fourth in nineteen seventy-nine. The primary use in these areas is residential, uh use of small scale non-resource um farming and forestry operations. Um also, for the record, lands within the uh forest farm uh FF ten uh non-resource zone require a conditional use permit um for a uh dwelling that's that's not related to farmer force use. Alright, so lands to the south and generally uh towards the southwest and southeast, um according to uh past and present staff research, were primarily created by D prior to state and countywide zoning regulations. Um so there is a caveat to that, that that because these parcels weren't necessarily created cleanly through a duly recorded subdivision, uh historical research can sometimes be difficult on these specific parcels. However, the research does indicate that the current four hundred and thirty-nine acre uh adjacent southwest parcel owned by Kenneth Thomas and the forty acre and forty-three acre parcels owned by Richard and Help Vance, um were all three reduced in size through a series of um two partitions occurring in nineteen eighty-four and nineteen eighty-five. Further west, the thirty and thirty-four acre parcel were also reduced in size through uh partitions that happened in the nineteen eighties. And so essentially, in the early nineteen eighties, these larger parcels um began to be uh partitioned into smaller units of land. So this map also illustrates uh common land ownership um in the in the southern area, south of Seven Mile Hill Road. Um and also indicates those parcels that are actually in uh forest farm tax deferral uh as provided by the Wasco County Assessor's Office. Uh the subject parcel, the forty point one three acre parcel is not uh within tax deferral status. This map just illustrates the approximate hundred and fifty foot uh wide Bonneville Power Administration transmission line. Staff estimates that approximately three hundred and six acres of forest lands are located north of this line. Uh excluding the adjacent south sixty-nine acre parcel that's owned by the applicants, um the south region is primarily undeveloped and managed for forestry uses. This map um and the following map illustrate the general zoning pattern of the area. Um zoning map provides that lands within the forest farm FF ten uh zone, the non-resource uh zone in purple are a clear demarcation between properties that are within the resource zone and those within residential zone as illustrated on this map. With the exception, of course, of uh the uh subject part, the applicant's subject parcel and one other small parcel owned by the county. Additionally, you can see that there is no um there is no zone that separates the resource zones of agriculture and forest, so. Just wanted to point that out as well. Alright, so let's move on to uh six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eights um subsection two C. This requires the applicant to provide uh the relationship between the exception area and the lands adjacent to it. In this case, again, soils um were analyzed, the relationship analysis of soils were analyzed as well as the uh general land use history zoning and use of the subject parcel and the adjacent parcels. So Wilson Order One Soil Survey's findings and conclusions regarding the subject parcels, uh soils differed greatly from those soils mapped in the nineteen eighty-two USDA Order Three Soil Survey, which really diminishes uh the relationship between the subject parcels, soil mapping units and those mapped on adjacent lands. Regarding the subject parcel's size and historical and current use, the properties existing relationship is more in line with those adjacent residential zone lands to the north, northwest and east, as opposed to the larger resource lands to the south, southwest and west. As provided earlier, the subject parcel's resource designation and zoning does not uh fall in line with the land use designation and zoning pattern of the area. And then lastly, considering the general or generally unsuitable soil locations and physical uh development on the property in relation to the generally suitable soil location locations, the subject parcel's relationship between active forestry uses occurring on the neighboring south, southwest and west properties and the subject parcel's potential for forestry uses is seriously diminished. And so um staff put this map together to help get a better understanding of um the relationship between the developed area, uh the developed areas of the parcel and the um the generally suitable and unsuitable soils uh that are mapped on the parcel. And so this this map visually represents the estimated physical development layered really on top of the soil suitability map. The bottom line is is that uh step and staff's conclusion is the relationship with lands south, southwest and west are diminished and uh the relationship between the subject parcel and lands to the north, northwest and east are actually increased. Considering again, the parcels developments combined with the soil quality combined with the um the general zoning of the area uh and use of lands within the area. the general zoning of the area and use of lands within the area. So six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eight subsection three really asks applicants to use the aforementioned information and relationship analysis to demonstrate that farm use propagation or harvesting of a forest product and forest operations or forest practices are impracticable. So when examining individually, each one of the aforementioned issues and conflicts may not necessarily alone be enough to justify an exception under this section. However, if the aforementioned issues and conflicts are examined in the totality, the impracticability of resource use activities on the subject parcel gains a bit of credibility. So the diminished soil capacity of the subject parcel, the scattered mapping of generally suitable soils that are located mostly on the subject parcels, north side where residential use and zoning dominates, the existing physical development and non-farm residential use of the subject parcel, the risk of increased conflicts between resource use and residential uses, the surrounding residential uses, and the fact that the subject parcel is really the only resource land in the Seven Mile Hill area directly abuts residentially zones, property, all combined make the allowed resource uses impracticable. Alright, so we're really covering the major areas of OAR six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eight. And subsection six is the next primary point or primary subsection. Essentially, zero zero two eight subsection six, C, A, and B required a consideration of parcel size and ownership patterns. Specifically subsections, C, A requires an analysis of how the existing development pattern came about and whether findings against the goals were made at the time of partitioning or subdivision. As provided earlier, parcels to the north, northwest, and east were created by subdivision prior to the state and county-wide land use laws. And parcels to the south, southwest, and southeast appear to have been created by D prior to zoning laws and were subsequently partitioned in the smaller units of land in the early nineteen eighties. So it's important to note that those units of land are still larger, the south units of land are still larger in size than those lots to the north that were created by subdivision. And then subsection zero zero two eight six C B really just requires a consideration of contiguous ownerships of land in relation to the land's actual use. So in this case, the applicant does own, as mentioned earlier, the sixty-nine acre parcel to the south of the subject parcel. Now, the sixty-nine acre parcel is also within forest F two zone. But unlike the subject parcel, the south parcel is farmed for profit as defined. It is in forest farm tax deferral and per the Order Three Soil Survey contains a majority of Wamack soil mapping units that are shown to be conducive for forest or farm uses. So the subject parcel, on the other hand, is not actively employed for farming, is is not in tax deferral and contains a majority of generally unsuitable soils per the Order One Soil Survey. So based on all of this, staff concluded that the request meets the required standards of OAR six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eight. The staff recommends approval of the request under, well, that's a typo, under the irrevocably committed exception. And these are the planning commission options with regards to this remand hearing. That concludes the presentation. Can I open it for questions?
Thank you, Daniel. Do planning commissioners have questions for Daniel? Any planning commissioners have questions? Okay, I don't hear any. Does the applicant and or your?
Sorry, Lynn, I was on mute, I'm sorry. I do have a question for Daniel. I just wanted to make sure I understood one thing you said, Daniel. The soils on the forty-acre Wilson property that we're discussing here, that soil survey is different from the soil surveys that have been conducted for surrounding parcels. So in that sense, maybe they're not comparable, is that right?
Yes. Order three soil surveys are more regional. The Order One Soil Survey was very specific to the subject parcel. And so you are correct, they're, they're not the same with regards to their findings. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank, that's what I thought. And just to follow up, I, I think it also looks from the soil survey map, when that's super positioned on top of the zoning map, that the zoning does not follow the soil classification very well. Is that along, at least not right here, is that correct?
That was staff's, now that was my analysis of it.
Yeah.
Is that when you look at the land use designation, and I can actually go back to the map, give me one second. The land use designation doesn't necessarily reflect, at least per the nineteen eighty-two Order Three Soil Survey, that in residential zones, the residential zones or lands designated residential or forest farm will contain, you know, poor soils. And I'll just use poor soils as a general term, generally unsuitable soils.
But that's not what we see here, right?
That is what we do see, is that, that you have Wamack soils, for the most part, were mapped in this area, and they predominate in this area. So forty-nine B, these are what they call soil mapping units. Forty-nine B, forty-nine C, fifty D, fifty E, and fifty-one D are all Wamack soil mapping units. And they're, at least per that Order Three Soil Survey, they are predominant throughout this area, at least this specific area that you're looking at. And which is surrounding the subject parcel. And they don't necessarily reflect that because lands to the south, which are designated for forestry use have vastly different soils than those lands mapped or that fall in residential.
Thank you.
Any other questions from planning commissioners?
I have one, Lynn.
Yes.
With the soils, when you're saying in Order One survey, that's going to supersede the Order Three survey, is that right, Daniel?
Well, I, I don't necessarily know. With regards to supersede, we know that I, I'm not a soil expert, but I would say that a soil or an Order One survey from my research is much more specific to and much more accurate than an Order Three survey. So.
That's, yeah, that's probably a better way than saying supersede, that, I apologize, that wasn't probably good word, good word.
Other questions, planning commissioners?
Can you go over the staff's recommendation one more time for me, Daniel, on the seven-hundred-page packet? I'm having a hard time finding everything here.
Well, staff recommended denial based on a goal exception under OAR six sixty zero zero four zero zero two five physically developed exception. Staff does recommend approval of the request under OAR six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eight irrevocably committed exception. The, the slide here just got a typo on it. And I'm sure that staff report's got a couple typos too, so.
So are you, I mean, technically, the staff's recommending denying and approving, aren't they?
Yes, under the physically developed exception, staff does not believe that the eighteen percent of the parcel meets the underlying requirements of OAR six sixty zero zero four zero zero two five.
Okay, this is Commissioner Willis.
Yes, Kate.
Thank you. So can you go back to the slide where you were? Please. Okay, so I, I'm understanding the, the the analysis for each of these. I just want to make sure that I understand the irrevocably committed piece. It has, it has the comparison of the, a big component of that is the soil analysis, the Order One, the Order Three. And on the Order One, it, we're talking about the difference between roughly forty-eight and fifty-one percent of suitable versus unsuitable for that piece of the analysis. So it's a, it's very close on that second component, and it's, it's with the eighteen percent on the first, on the first review or recommendation about the denial, it's, the analysis is between the thirty-two percent or whatever, the thirty-plus percent in the original, the, the original the prior work versus the, the deeper analysis where staff is coming up with the eighteen percent of physical use. Is that right? Am I getting that right? Okay, alright, thank you. That's help, that's helpful. I'm just trying to boil it down to what are the two components and what are the main factors that we're trying to consider in deciding this. Thank you.
I have one more question too, Daniel. On the, on the six sixty dash zero zero four dash zero zero twenty-five, is there a, a percentage that is, that would make it, is there, is there a percentage, like with the class seven soils, you have to be over fifty, fifty percent? Is there a percentage on the exception for land physically developed to other uses? Is there a specific percentage set forth in the state laws?
No, and it's physical development, right? So the soils, in that specific section of the staff report, I didn't necessarily discuss soils because it's physically developed.
Taking, just to, just to clarify further, taking into account the, the fire breaks and the other, the road offsets and the other factors that you consider there physically.
Yes, so i- in the original, in the original application, staff estimated roughly twelve percent. When it went to Luba, it was explicitly clear, Luba said that you cannot use access drives because access drives are allowed use in areas, farm and forest areas essentially. However, fire breaks are, and it's in the staff report, but fire breaks are necessary for developments. They're required under chapter ten. And so because those fire breaks are necessary, staff added those to the physical development analysis. The road itself can't be counted, but the fire break that is required for the road can be counted. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
I guess my, the only thing I'm confused on is what is, what make, when it doesn't meet the physically developed part of it where we're having this, where it was, Mr. Wilson thought it was thirty-two percent, and the staffer, he thought it was twelve percent, and it's eighteen percent. How do you, at what point do you go, okay, it does meet that, when you're talking about a percentage?
From, from staff's research, with, with regards to case law, it's demanding, it's very demanding. If you're asking, if you're asking for an exception based on physical developments, then the subject parcel is so physically developed to a non-resource use that it can't be, it can no longer be used for resource use. It's a very demanding burden. And so eighteen percent and even thirty-five percent is likely not to meet that standard.
Okay, that clears that up for me. Thank you, Daniel, I appreciate it.
Could I ask a follow-up to that?
Yes, Russ.
Thanks, Lynn. Um, so if, if, if the approval or the recommendation is based on how physically developed it is, then that doesn't seem to correlate to soil classification.
Soil classification is, is very pertinent with regards to six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eight in this case. And that's where a lot of, well, all of the analysis found. There are two specific exceptions that were requested during the original application. And, and covered in the Luba appeal. One was zero zero two five, the physically developed exception, and the other was zero zero two eight, the irrevocably committed exception.
Right, but the, you're, you're recommending approval based on the physically developed one, right?
No, I'm recommending the denial based on the physically developed one.
Oh, okay, okay.
An approval based on zero zero two eight irrevocably committed. Because it'd be, zero zero two eight irrevocably committed allows for additional analysis of different of different factors, one being soil, physically developed zoning patterns of the area, those kinds of things.
So on the screen that I'm looking at here, it says staff recommends approval of the, of the request under the physically developed exception.
It was a typo, Commissioner. The staff recommends approval of the request under the irrevocably committed exception.
That's what I thought, okay.
That was a typo, I apologize for that. It's confusing enough, so.
I'm, I'm confused too, Russ, with the, because it's a, it's a not approval on the physically developed, but it's an approval on the soils. But I don't see an overall recommendation, that's what's gotten me a little bit.
Daniel, would you restate your recommendation on the irrevocably committed and show the slide that lists all of the factors that contribute to that? There was like.
This slide, Karen?
Uh, no, there was a.
No, there was another.
That listed like eight things that cumulatively, there you go. Impactive, impractical.
Yes, this, this is the essential reasoning why staff recommends approval of the, of the goal exception under OAR six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eight subsection, wow, zero zero two eight. Irrevocably committed.
Could I ask a, Lynn, could I ask a question on this slide?
Yes.
So the first bullet, and that's the primary reason, as I understand it, diminished soil capacity. Compared with a lot of, from the soil map we just saw, there are vast amounts of F two land that have similar soils. So when you say it's diminished, is that true compared with other F two land?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah, sorry, it was. So my question then, to sharpen it up a little for you, is that it looked like from the soil map that the soils on this forty-acre parcel were similar to other F two land to the south and to the west. So my question is, is this soil really that different from other soil in F two lands?
So previously, during the initial request, all that was available was the Order Three Soil Survey. And the forty-acre subject parcel was mapped primarily with Wamack soil, which was class four, class six. The applicant provided a. The applicant provided a, a sort of one soil survey, which, again, dug deep into or analyzing the soils of that specific forty acre parcel. And of course, it came back as stating that a majority, fifty-one percent of the parcel was generally unsuitable, class seven or eight soils. So in fact, the subject parcel itself does have a diminished soil capacity, specifically with regards to the order one soil survey findings, as opposed to the, um, order three map soil survey, which is the entire area, the entire northern part of Wasco County. So it is, the, the subject parcel itself does have a diminished soil capacity.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
But it was only, it was only found because of the order one soil survey.
Well, and I, I think, but what I'm hearing is part of the answer to my question is, we don't really know because we don't have comparable surveys. In other words, we don't really know how this soil capacity compares to other F two soil capacities because the surveys are different.
Well, we know for a fact that this parcel has diminished soil capacity as compared to what it was mapped, what it was mapped into the nineteen eighty-two soil survey. We know for a fact that it's completely different, that the soils are more diverse. And, and the fact of the matter is, is it skyline and Bodell soil mapping units didn't, weren't mapped in the nineteen eighty-two soil survey. You are correct with regards to knowing explicitly how different the, the, the area around, the, the region around the subject parcel is. We don't know because we're, we're using nineteen eighty-two order three soil survey data. But we do know that the subject parcel does have diminished soil capacity. And its soil mapping units are much more diverse than was originally believed and, or which, which was originally provided in the oil three, order three soil survey.
Okay, thank you. And Daniel, with an order one, uh, an actual soil scientist came out and did the, the soil test, so you know for sure what those soils are saying. I mean, that's been done correctly, whereas with an order three, it's more of just a general mapping. Nobody actually probably put eyes on this specific parcel. They just kind of lumped it in. Is that right?
I, I can't speak for how an order three soil survey or the specifics of an order one soil survey are done, but from the order one soil survey that was submitted by the applicant and conducted by Gary Kitzrow, he lays out how he committed to this little survey. So it's a twenty-three specific sites. I think he used the backhoe for all twenty-three specific sites. He has, you know, and this of course is all in the staff report. He, he has laid out his methodology of how he went about doing a specific survey for this parcel. So now I don't know how order three soil surveys are necessarily conducted, but.
Commissioner Matt. I have, I have a question in the fact that it says, do diminished soil capacity is impractical to use for different reasons. There's still other parts of the county that have these levels of soil levels for five, six, seven, and eight, and they're still capable of using them as agriculture. Why is that not considered in this?
Hi, Commissioner, I'm going off of what, uh, Mr. Kitzrow provided. And what he provided was that, um, I'd have to get the exact quote, but it's essentially that, uh, the parcel has a majority, fifty-one percent of generally unsuitable soils and is not available for, um, commercial forest or agricultural use. And so all I can do is go off.
Um, I just questioned that. Okay.
The, I have one, oh, sorry, go ahead, Kate, go ahead, Katie, Kathleen, sorry.
Kate, did you have any further questions?
No, I did not.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, I thought you did, Kate, sorry. Um, on the class seven soils, the, when you come to the six sixty zero zero four twenty-eight, the, it says if it's predominantly class seven soils, that gives it, that's the law, right? It's predominantly class seven soils or higher. It's not about where, what's around or anything else like that. It's just part of the law, isn't it?
Can you restate the question, Commissioner?
Well, uh, with Vicki asking about what makes it not usable soil, I think the rule is, if it's predominantly class seven or higher soil, then it makes it a part of this. It's impractical. It's because with six sixty dot zero zero four dash twenty-eight, that's where the soils don't support the farming that it's calling for. That's why it's allowed to, that's why you're approving it is because of the diminished soil capacity, correct?
That, that's, that's, um, that's generally the explanation. Now, I did provide in the project report, there is a guide to this soil survey and the green sheets, and it provides that, um, the classes, class one through seven are kind of for general use. From my understanding, that you kind of dig into the specific soil mapping unit, right? Is it, is it a Wamack? Is it a skyline? Is it a Bodell? What type of mapping unit it is? And the, the soil scientists, you know, the general term though is yes, class seven is generally unsuitable. But it's, it's a little bit more, from my understanding, a little bit more complicated than that. But generally speaking, yeah, class seven soil is, is, uh, not, not suitable, so.
Mike?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, this is Mike Davis. Uh, just gone through some soil analysis as well. You're correct. Generally, sevens and eights is, uh, is considered such poor property that it kind of falls into that classification. Once the controversy starts, it's when you get into class sixes, then it's, uh, even though a minor, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's more of a, uh, who knows, even in that area, but seven and eights by, by the code is, um, non-ag.
Any other questions? From commissioners?
Uh, I have one then, for Daniel.
Go ahead.
So is there, maybe you don't know the answer offhand, but if you do, is there a precedent within the county planning for basing zoning decisions on soil classification? Is, is this new territory or is this standard practice? Or had, had, are you aware of it? Us, having, I can't recall us, um, doing this in, uh, can you, Daniel? Has this been done before?
Um, not that I'm aware of, but so it's important to remember that in, under OAR six sixty zero zero four zero zero two eight, diminished soil capacity is only one factor that, that was provided in the original record to justify the goal exception as well as, there, again, there were multiple factors in the original record. So the soil analysis was a driving, um, piece of, of information in the remand request, but it wasn't necessarily the only factor. Uh, with regards to your specific question, has soil capacity been the only basis for a rezone? I, I can't answer that. I, I don't have enough years with the department. I do know that, uh, Luba has addressed that issue and I believe, and I don't want to misquote Luba, but I believe that it can't be the only factor or it's the sole factor in a rezone. And I can't quote the, the case off the top of my head, so.
Great, thank you.
Further planning commissioner questions?
This is Commissioner Willis. I do not have any further questions. Thank you.
Okay, then we will, um, move on. Does the applicant and/or your representative wish to present anything?
Chair.
If so.
Mike Davis has had a stand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
No, it's, it's okay. This is Commissioner Davis. Uh, the only place I'm familiar with on what we was talking about in regarding, you know, classifications of soils was, it's very specific in when you do a part of partial. I do know that those, uh, require that if you do a part of partial, it requires a certain percentage to be in class seven or above. And I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you. At this time, does the applicant and/or your representative want to present anything? And if so, state your name for the record.
Uh, yes, Bill Summerfield, uh, representing Dave Wilson. First of all, let me commend Daniel on a spectacular staff report, and I'm not just saying that, this is good. It's in-depth, it's thorough, it addresses the relevant factors, and he went above and beyond to find additional, not evidence, but rundown what the, what was needed here. Because basically what happened was we presented to you what I think all of you know is, which is that this is inappropriately zoned and does not support resource use and should not be in resource zoning. And Luba told us we needed a little bit more evidence to get to that point. And so let me tell you how you find a guy like Gary Kitzrow. DLCD has a list of soil, approved soil scientists on their website. These are accredited, licensed soil scientists. They are not hired guns. You phone them up and they come out and whatever they find, they find. And he did come out with a backhoe. He did dig twenty-three holes and he found what he found. And what he found were, were predominantly class seven and eight soils. To Daniel's point about the green sheets, class seven and eight are not completely barren. You can grow things on them. The real question is, are they worthy of remaining in resource land? Should they be protected? We shouldn't analyze what other people around Wasco County may do on soils that may be substandard. There can be incredible variability in soils even next door, and we, we simply don't know enough about adjoining lands to make any conclusion, and there's no evidence in the record to make any conclusion about what other properties may or may not do. We know this particular property is, uh, has substandard soils and is not suitable for resource use. The whole physically developed thing, I think, is honestly a bit of a fool's errand, trying to arrive at a number that gets you anywhere, but it is highly relevant to the analysis for impracticability under the irrevocably committed standard because it factors into what's available for resource use on this property. And that combination of the crummy soils and the physical development make this particularly unsuited for resource use. And that's really the, kind of the bottom line. These are alternative grounds for approval, and so you can agree completely with Daniel on the, on the, uh, physically developed, but if we find that the land is irrevocably committed, then you recommend approval to the county. And we, that's what we're urging you to do. I, again, I can't really fault the staff report in any appreciable way. I think I'm just going to leave it at that and, uh, address rebuttal as necessary. Thank you.
Does the planning commission have any questions?
This is, this is Commissioner Willis. I, I would like to ask a question. I'm, I'm curious as I, as we're, I agree that Daniel Doherty has done an excellent job of laying out some really complex, um, information. And if I'm understanding this correctly, we're in kind of a toss-up situ-, you know, a, a, it could go either way, given, given the, um, requirements that we need to look at and given the facts that have been presented and the evidence that's been presented. And if I'm understanding this correctly, were, um, the, the physical development requirement is, is not met in my mind if it's eighteen percent and that's a compelling analysis. And then you're talking about largely the soil, the soil comparisons with an order one, analysis being done, and you're coming up with forty-eight percent plus versus fifty-one percent plus in terms of suitable and unsuitable soil, um, analysis. I'm, I'm kind of, how do you respond to that? Because when I look at all of that together, if I'm understanding it correctly, I, I don't think that it's just obvious. It's not obvious in my mind, at least.
Daniel, would you mind throwing up that slide with about the eight factors for, uh, oh, two eight up on the screen, please? And I, I think that's an oversimplification, and I think we're focusing a little too much on the numbers for the soils for the irrevocably committed, uh, fact, for the irrevocably committed, uh, criteria. It's more, it's more than just soils. Um, physical development is limited. Is it or is it not physically developed? It's very binary choice. Uh, impracticable is much broader. And if you look at these factors on the screen that Daniel's thrown up, diminished soil capacity is one factor, yes. And that one is, it's fairly close, although ask yourself how on earth you'd actually make use of the lands that are, that have suitable soil? How would you find it? And how would you really devote those to resource use? But setting that aside for a minute, and they are scattered, as Daniel points out, setting that aside for a minute, then you go to the next factor, which is, uh, eighteen percent existing development. You go to the parcel size, which is forty acres, which is tiny for forest land. You go to adjoining uses, which are residential, with potential conflicts. You go to the fact that this zoning for this particular parcel is, is grossly out of step with its neighbors. Um, that's the one thing Daniel didn't highlight in his oral presentation that's in his staff report, is that this is an anomaly. It's the only parcel on Seven Mile Hill Road zoned for resource use. It's the only one that touches residential uses. It's a, it's an erroneous zone. And you look at all those factors then, and that's, that's what's making it the no-brainer. It's not just the fifty-one, forty-eight, split of the soils. Does that answer your question?
Well, I recall, um, I, it's very helpful to hear you walking through these factors, and I appreciate it. Thank you. I, I do recall, um, looking at the maps in the original hearing and, um, looking how, at how this was kind of a keystone in the middle of an ark that looked very different than what was this, what the surrounding uses were. I remind someone, please, staff, or someone, please remind me again about what, within these soils, I know we heard, we heard hay, we heard ponderosa pine, you know, what can be grown. Uh, there was a third crop. I can't recall what, what it was on forty acres. And, and what does, you know, can we talk a little bit more about that?
Uh, Commissioner, let me, let me pull it up really fast.
Thank you. I'm finding, I do feel, I do feel like there are a variety of factors here where this is, in my mind, this is a close call. We have to consider a lot of those different factors and I appreciate the review.
Commissioner Willis, this is Commissioner Ashlyn. You can pasture, you can raise horses or any of that kind, with supplemental feed on a seven and eight.
Okay, that's helpful. And with forty acres, even when you have surrounding residential areas?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Willis, this is Commissioner Davis. Um, it, it really depends on, on the physical size. The, the farther south you go, the larger the ranches are in order, in order to maintain livability. It it really depends on the on the physical size. The the farther south you go, the larger the ranches are in order to maintain livability. When you have 40 acres and it's class seven and eight, granted, there is some weeds growing up and some some grass is growing up, but you'll never sustain a a family or whatnot on it. So you have to take a little bit more broader picture, class seven and eights. I think I think Commissioner Ashley definitely has a lot of seven and eights. We have a lot of seven and eights, but I'd rather grow solar panels than than cows.
Daniel, have fun something further to add there? You were looking something up.
I just didn't want to interrupt Chairman Carter. So the class four and class six, which is, I think, forty forty eight percent has provided in the green sheets, winter wheat, thirty five bushels per acre, and grass hay is 1.5 tons per acre. Ponderosa pine was 20 to 49 cubic feet per acre, a potential yield category. There was no listing for windbreaks. And with regards to wildlife suitability, it was, for the most part, all the various categories were either fair or poor. With regards to the Wamack soils, which were classified as class four and class six.
Thank you. Russ, you have another question?
No, I just, I guess, a question for all of us. It feels like we're maybe shifting into deliberations. And so I was just, you know, going to observe that and ask if we wanted to formally do that.
Not yet. So the questions are should be directed to the applicant or his representatives at this point. If there are any further questions of them, if not, then we'll move on. Okay, now, are there any persons who wish to speak in favor of the request? And if so, please state your name for the record. And let's see. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the request? Are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition to the request? And if so, please state your name for the record. And.
Sheila Dooley, 3300 Vensel Road, Mosher. I'd like to request party status. The USDA Soil Survey found the soils to be more productive than average and suitable to growing ponderosa pine, Oregon white oak. These trees, as well as fir trees, are growing in the areas not mowed and are visible in the aerial photographs. The stated goal of the soils, the applicant soil survey was to find a preponderance of unsuited soils. The applicant cannot say with any certainty that this is the case. Out of 40.13 acres, 20.79 were claimed to be unsuitable, a difference of only 1.4 or 5 acres. The soil survey included areas that were incorrectly labeled as class H infrastructure, areas that included vacant land, treat areas, and illegal and unusable buildings. Removing these results in a preponderance of suitable soils. Those there's also a margin of error involved in using 23 test sites and extrapolating the results to apply to the areas around them. The map used to calculate the soil types does not contain 90 degree angles on the south side and represents a supposedly unsuited soil type as a result. There is some discrepancies in the soil survey. It included a soil type found nowhere else in Wasco County, northern Wasco County, 51C. It shows up nowhere else but on the applicant's property, and soil types are listed on PC 1425. The soil type Tenney Bodell was identified in areas containing ponderosa pine and Oregon white oak, trees that should not be growing on this soil type according to the Soil and Water Conservation District. This calls into question the validity and accuracy of the soil survey. Some discrepancies in the staff report were, one, the claim that the subject parcels uses more in line with properties with residential zoning. This property is part of 109 acre tract historically used for farming alfalfa hay and grazing, containing merchantable timber. The other 69 acres are in farm deferral. Two, the claim the property is surrounded on three sides by existing residential development, and there would be potential conflicts with forestry use. There's no house on the west side, the applicant's house on the south side. Both are zoned F2. To the north, across the road is a tree farm. The house to the east is on the other side of the property. The description of potential conflicts with forest use is unfounded. Third, claim the property can't be used to make a profit and has been removed from farm forest tax deferral. This was most likely done to by the applicant to support the claim that the property should be rezoned. Yet he is planning to clear and farm additional 20 acres as adjoining property rather than utilize this property, choosing to not actively farm this parcel, plant trees, or let them come back naturally, or apply for a tax deferral was done to support the claim that the property should be rezoned. The request for a rezone should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
And then Phil's here, if you want to hear from him, or somebody else first.
Do I hear from Phil?
Who's who's speaking?
We have Phil Swaim, Sheila's husband. We share the computer.
And you have something different to add?
I do.
Okay.
I respectfully request party status, even though it is not required since I am testifying on this. My name's Phil Swaim. I live at 3300 Vensel Road. In 2014, there was a previous application to rezone this and adjacent parcels from F280 to FF10. This was denied by Wasco County after the county received a letter from LD DLCD and ODF in strong opposition. They disagreed with the claim that the BPA power line was serving a fire break. The Moser Creek Fire of August 2020 proved this to be correct, as the fire raced through the easement and onto adjacent forest land. Additional development would push the wildland urban interface deeper into the forest land to the detriment of forest management and fire risk. Deep DLCD did not believe the subject property was either physically developed or irrevocably committed and recommended that the existing zone and plan designations be unchanged. The applicant has put forth a new site plan that drastically is drastically different from the site plan in the Luba Record. There are imaginary buffer requirements included in the remand request. These include a 50 foot setback along Seven Mile Road where none is required. On the applicant's property of this 50 foot buffer, there are over 60 pine trees growing from 2 to 40 feet in height. The new site plan also says the 2,600 square foot house is now tripled in size to 8,000 square feet. The power line runs the length of the property for about 1,300 feet for a total of less than 40,000 square feet in in buffer area has now increased to 10,000 feet, running every which way, which can to propose trailer sites. It seems that the new site plan is what Mr. Wilson wishes he had, not what actually exists. Why do we? Why do we have to respond to this? Mr. Wilson claims the soil is no good for either egg or egg use for growing trees. However, two thirds of the 40 acre parcel is covered tree covered. 90% of the alleged bad soil on the south and east side is tree covered. There are over 500 mature pine trees on 28 acres. The balance of the acreage, the mowed hay field, is a prime soil type that could grow just about anything. Trees would naturally reseed it if left unmowed, even with Douglas fir, as evidenced by a water course down the draw in the center of the property, which also has a willow tree growing there. According to Oregon State Extension, if the native vegetation on the site includes healthy ponderosa pine, that's a good indication that species, this species will respond favorably if planted. Please reject the proposed zone change. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment. My name is Jill Barker.
Please.
Thirty three seventy.
Hang on, please.
Mosher, and I request party status.
Jill, what's your, okay, we had a little feed. We had a little feedback there. All right, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Is that better now?
Yes, please. That's good.
Regarding the Wilson's remand application, the statement that there is a quote literal moonscape nature of the adjoining property south of the subject property, end quote, cannot be substantiated. That same land to the south and east has been Grant Robinson's productive hay and grazing fields since the 1970s. To the northeast of the property is Ortley, a productive ranch owned and operated by corchie wheat and cattle for over 50 years. These are hardly moonscapes. The new site plan submitted with the remand application has changed considerably from the original site plan submitted in the original Luba Record in 2019. There is much new infrastructure shown that does not yet exist, such as three proposed trailer sites, as well as additional driveways, power lines, and septic drain fields. It appears that this non-existent infrastructure has been included to add to buffer zones in an attempt to preclude forestry use. Future plans must not be included to create new buffer zones. The applicant appears to be adding this proposed physical development to make a physically developed case after the fact. Luba ruled that the property was not physically developed based on the evidence. Is the applicant trying to show that there is more developed than it actually is, suggesting that it is irrevocably committed to non-resource use? It is completely irresponsible to allow more residential development in a high fire risk, high wind area in an unprecedented drought condition with declining aquifers and wells. The areas that have been mowed are very suitable for growing trees, and in the past produced three crops of alfalfa hay each year. In 1977, I assisted in the purchase of hay from that same field. The fact that the applicant is not using most of his property for forest purposes and has not replanted the open field with trees or let them grow back naturally does not make it any less valuable as forest land. I find it obviously refutable to claim that soils on the applicant's property that are presently growing many trees are supposedly nevertheless incapable of growing trees due to unsuitable soil classifications. Some years ago, in the process of doing fire fuel reduction on the property, the mechanical grub hoeing of the understory was removed many young seedling and sapling trees in those areas. In spite of this, there are still numerous trees in the alleged unsuitable soil areas as shown in aerial photographs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Gary Cassidy, you do you want to speak in opposition to the proposal?
Yes, my name is Gary Cassidy. I live at 2,500 Badger View Drive on Seven Hill. What noted in the report was reference to the the scrub oak that is on on Seven Mile Hill. And I just wanted to address that. This seems different than the soils issue that has been addressed, but as a person degreed in wildlife management and habitat development, it's well known that habitat's a key factor in managing wildlife well. And the official habitat name of the scrub oak is white oak or Wasco oak savanna. And this is a section from the Columbia River to Mount Hood, and Seven Mile Hill is a significant part of that. And I cite several studies here. The Oregon Habitat Journal says that oak woodland in the state is so threatened that 99% of it is gone. The Oregon Habitat Venture for Bird Conservation in Eastern Oregon gives Wasco Oaks the highest priority for conservation. And Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Oregon Conservation Strategy identify Wasco Oaks as important habitat for many as for as many as 300 species. The Lewis Woodpecker, the Townsend's Big Earred Bat, Mount Hood Vets are all species that are on sensitive critical list and depend on this habitat type. And the recommendations from all of these agencies is to limit impact, limit development on these lands and to seek to restore Wasco oak woodlands. My my thought is that a zone change could set a precedent for further development that could drastically be detrimental to the habitat that is deemed to be protected. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Mike Sarge-Takis, did I pronounce that correctly?
Close enough, Sarge-Takis.
Sarge-Takis, you wish to speak in opposition to the proposal?
Sure, yes. Mike Sarge-Takis, on behalf of Sheila Dooley and Jill Barker, I'll be brief. First, I'll just note that the staff correctly analyzed this application with regard to the developed exception. Luba found as a matter of law that this parcel wasn't eligible for a developed exception. The applicants provided no new information that remedy to remedy that problem. For the bulk of my discussion on the irrevocable commitment issue, Luba opinion provided in the record here in the in the staff packet as well as the briefing below, which I believe is in the record and available online, should provide the county with comprehensive guidance on the standards for irrevocable commitment. The staff report references dictionary definition, but there's a dearth of case law around what what impracticability means and what irrevocable irrevocable commitment means. I've also provided some some more in written comments that I sent to Mr. Doherty this afternoon. The bottom line here is that almost nothing has changed since the decision by Luba and the applicant hasn't provided any new information that could lead to findings that would support an irrevocable commitment exception. The findings are not materially different than those which Luba found to be insufficient. Planning Commission should deny this application. I'd also like to request the record in this matter be held open for the maximum time allowable so that everyone can process all this new information and respond to it appropriately. A couple of just brief points about the staff report. On page 72, the the staff report notes the subject parcel use and character is quote more in line with the residential parcels nearby. It's not quite true. Those parcels are less than 15 acres in size. Well, this is a 40 acre parcel. Much more similar to those parcels to the west and south. Also, reliance upon longstanding adjacent rural uses is insufficient to demonstrate that resource use of the proposed exception area has become impracticable in the absence of recent or imminent changes affecting the subject property. That's a Luba case, Woodracheck, Yamhill County, 34, or Luba 453, and the pin site for that's 460 to 461. It's that 1998 case. On page 82, staff concludes that quote resource use on the subject property has become impracticable, but notably absent any analysis and the recent changes responsible for this metamorphosis. To the contrary, staff points the applicant's continued use for livestock grazing on the property for the last three years. The threshold questions here are about conflicts and about the ability of the land to generate quote profit, which is a term of art and refers to just a gross income. Staff improperly relies on some conflicts which have not actually arisen and others which are not allowed to be considered anyway when establishing an irrevocably committed exception. That's on page 83 of the staff report, noting that residential density in the surrounding parcels significantly limits the use of pest control techniques. Luba addressed that squarely in its opinion below remanding this decision. Finally, this county is not in these findings explained how this parcel irrevocably finding this parcel irrevocably committed would not lead to committing the large tracts of adjacent parcels to the south and west, which is required. The open questions around the suddenly greatly diminished soil capacity aside, the applicants failed to demonstrate any actual conflicts between this parcel and surrounding uses, which is the ultimate question here. Luba was cleared into prior decision. This is a high bar, and the facts could not bear out an irrevocable commitment exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss any anybody?
Chair, we have a hand raised, Jennifer Roche.
Oh, Jennifer, yes. Jennifer, did you wish to speak in opposition to the proposal?
I do. I don't have as technical of information as anyone else, but I've lived on Seven Mile my entire life and used to have a friend that lived on this particular property. And all I can say is that in my history, I've seen this property farmed. I've seen all kinds of things grown on it. I've seen all kinds of different trees, including the weeping lillo. And to say that it's incapable of sustaining a farm or trees and I think like that is is ridiculous. It's only because it's been intentionally kept that way that that has been the case, because I knew people that lived there and did it very successfully. And even before they lived there, I know that it was done successfully for years. And I am 41 years old. I know that's relatively young, but I know that people like my parents and many other people that have lived up there, all new people who've farmed that property. And there were lots of trees, and I just don't believe that it's unsustainable for that. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, anybody else wish to testify in opposition to the proposal? I don't think I see anybody else on the list. I don't think I see anybody else on the list. Do the planning commissioners have questions for anyone that spoke in opposition to the request? If not, does the applicant or representative wish to rebut any of the testimony? And the extent of the rebuttal needs to be limited to issues raised during the testimony and can't be used to introduce new evidence?
I do, and I'll be, I'll try to be brief. The Mr. Cassidy's comments, I think they're beyond the scope of the remand at this point. And I'll remind the commissioners that we established this property is not in the big game overlay. At the last hearing, we established. I'm going to address a couple of things. One, I'll take credit for the moonscape comment. We had intended these to be demonstrative and to bring them and put them on the board, not so much blow them up as little PDFs that you get. They're much more compelling in person, and so we're dealing with COVID, and it is what it is. But when you look at this, at this size, it looks like a moonscape. And the only thing you see that's remotely burdened is way down here in this corner, miles and miles away. We were trying to show exactly what Gary Kitsero established, which is the unsuitability of these soils in this area for sustaining resource use. I guess I'll address the site plan as well, and I'll take credit for that as well. The original site plan was to scale. Again, we blow it up because we thought that you were getting short shrift, that you weren't getting the full information from a little eight and a half by 11. The trailer sites that are on there are former trailer sites, not future. They were there when the Black family owns the property, I believe. And they have, they were cleared and there's some access to them. And so we're just really trying to show what the property looks like and what it consists of, not pull the wool over anybody's eyes. With all the concerns about development, I'll remind everybody this is not a development hearing. It's a zone change. Development may follow in the future, but that's a hearing for a different day. The zone change ordinance is, do you meet the criteria or not? And concerns about development are not really germane to that. I'll come back again to Gary Kitsero. When I'm analyzing a property, I'll take my information from professionals who have dug 23 holes and analyzed what they find over anecdotal reports and drive-by pictures from the road. The science is irrefutable as to what is there. The, the older USDA study is a blunt instrument. This is the, the category one study is site-specific and very, very pointed as to this property. Finally, to one comment from Ms. Dooley about an illegal house on the property, there is nothing illegal on this property. The old homestead is permit, fully permissible as a general purpose or agricultural building. No one's living there. There is no illegality anywhere. As to Mr. Sarge-Takis, if he sent anything, I didn't get it today. So I don't, I can't speak to any written materials he submitted. I would urge you not to leave the record open, to deliberate, make your decision, and we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the planning commission have any other questions for anyone, including staff at this time? Mike, your hand is up.
No, it's not. Well, hang on a second. It is. Let me lower it. Sorry. I wonder why my hand was getting tired.
Oh, okay. Does any other planning commissioner have questions for anyone, including staff?
I'm, I'd like to ask Mr. Sarge-Takis where the, where the, the definition of the, when he was talking about the ground that's irrevocably, I can't remember. I don't have the wording in front of me, but he said that there's a definition from the Luba report, and I've been looking for it, and I cannot find it anywhere. And I was wondering if he knows where that is off the top of his head or could tell me.
Sure, there's a little bit of a rundown in my written testimony on what irrevocable commitment means. It's a, it's, you know, found in OAR 660, sub four, sub 28, sub two, as well as, you know, in a, a number of cases. There's DLCDB Curry County, the Pigeon Point case, which, which holds that the fundamental test for irrevocable commitment is the relationship between the subject property and the surrounding area. The Converse case, DLCDB Willow County has more insight. It's, it's, there, you know, there's a dearth of case law that provides the sort of universe of that, of that definition. And again, that's, I, I submitted my testimony regrettably later than I would have liked to Mr. Doherty this afternoon, but he mentioned he was going to try and get it up onto the website. So there's good discussion in there, as well as in, in the briefing, which I believe should be also in the record somewhere. The briefing that was before Luba, and otherwise Luba has some discussion about what irrevocable commitment and impracticability mean under the law. But I'd be happy to also submit, if you'd like anything further, I'm happy to write, you know, write up anything else if you'd like some more information on that.
I'm just pulling up your comments now, so I can just get through.
Daniel did discuss that the issues related to irrevocably committed throughout the report. Okay. Any other commissioners have any questions of anyone? Okay. Technical question for Daniel. The request to have the record remain open came after the hearing started. So can you please advise on what we need to do there?
With regards to leaving the record open and deliberating or?
It says if anyone requested the record remain open for at least seven days prior to, oh, prior to the conclusion, sorry. The hearing must be continued at this time, and no deliberation may occur. So we've had a request for the record to remain open from Mike Sarge-Takis. So I, does that mean that we can't deliberate and we have to continue the hearing?
I would confer with the director, but I believe so, if it was a specific request or if it was a recommendation.
Director, can you advise?
I, I believe, Chair, you have to keep the record open if it's been requested.
And for how long?
Have to look at what we've got in the ordinance. Let, let me take a look.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner McIntyre, if I can jump back in for a second. Dave Wilson was down in my lower office, and he says he's been unable to get his unmute, his computer unmuted, but he'd like to say something. Can I put him on right here?
Yes.
I'll have him just sit here and do it here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Wilson. I own the property, and I just have a few things to speak about. As far as a property being developed and all the new lines and stuff you see on the property, when we originally went to try to check and do the changes, saw the original map, we had no clue that it was going to go to Luba and become such a big deal. So we just showed the homes and the homestead and a few things. Not all the buried utilities, not the water lines, not the sewer lines, not the power lines. We didn't even think that was necessary. So then after Luba, I, I, I'm a general contractor. So I took a wheel roller counter, and I mapped every single line on the property and put down the footage of it. So yeah, it's changed compared to the original one, because we had no clue that we needed to do all that legwork. So we did, and so that's why you have that. And as far as the square footage of the log home changing, it changed because I didn't, originally, I didn't add any decks. It has decks on all four sides. So I added those decks plus the 50 foot. So, and as far as the home, the homes up there, those homes were there 30 years ago. The, the manufactured homes in those two areas across the field, they were there. They were never permitted or legal. That's why they got removed. But the utilities and stuff still goes there. So that's why we only showed the water lines going across to over there to them. We didn't get involved in, in all the other utilities that went to those homes. But they were there 30 years ago, when I originally bought the upper property. And as far as, you know, them thinking that I'm still farming that, the only thing I do every year and have since I've been there is try to protect me and my neighbors from fire. So I mow all that. I mow all that up on the top that has a few scattered trees on it. I mow that lower field with just a mower, and it lays there. Now, about six years ago, I did try to have a farmer from, from the valley come, come up, and I let him mow it and harden and bale it. So that, first it would keep me from having to do the work to mow it and to keep the fire hazard down. But it also, if it would benefit him, it was okay. He did it for two years and then no longer wanted it, because the hay, it's not hay, it's like straw hay or, or grass hay, excuse me. There is absolutely no sign anywhere on that property, which there would be if it was suitable for alfalfa, there would still be some alfalfa there. And they also stated that there was some oats there at one time. There is no oat plants or no alfalfa plants anywhere on that property. So I, I questioned a little bit. I don't know what, they certainly didn't make a living on that property. And, and I could see that numerous people probably tried to farm it, but did they make a profit? I seriously doubt it. I'm, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay. Okay, Director, do we have some guidance as to next step here?
I need a few more minutes, Chair. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you for the time and forbearance, everybody, and Chair. The language in the script does not come directly from, from the ordinance, so it's not a requirement to issue a continuance. Just verifying with the Oregon revised statutes, it is, it's a May. So any person attending the hearing may request a continuance and for the record to remain open, but it is at the planning commission's discretion.
Very good. Thank you. Does does the planning commission wish to have the record remain open and continue the hearing? Or do you wish to move into, close the hearing and move into deliberation? Could I hear from each commissioner? Pardon? One person? Russ?
I, I don't feel the need to continue the hearing.
Chris?
I, yeah, I don't think so either. I don't, I mean, I don't know if there's going to be any new evidence coming in, so I think we're probably where we're at.
Okay, Kate?
I agree. I think we should deliberate.
Mike?
Yes, I think we should deliberate.
Okay.
I say we deliberate.
Very good. Okay. At this time, the public hearing is closed, and the planning commission will enter into deliberation. At this time, the planning commission only may ask questions of staff. So who has any questions? Any further questions of staff at this point?
I have one further question and apologies for, I'm sure we've talked about this already, and it's been covered, but the owner mentioned, you know, that you can't make a profit. So I'd like to hear just a little bit more about that in terms of where it falls into any of the requirements. I'm not, my understanding is that that is not necessarily part of our consideration, but I'd like to, I'd like confirmation, please.
Commissioner, so under 660 004, 0028, farm use is, I'd have to find it really fast. So subsection three essentially asks applicants to use the aforementioned information. So the irrevocably committed information concerning the subject parcel, adjacent parcels, the relationship between those various parcels and demonstrates that farm use propagation or harvesting of a forest product and forest operations or forest practices are impracticable.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question about the forest. If you're saying that it's impracticable, impracticable to make a, a living on the property, is that what you're saying, Daniel?
It's one, one of the factors, yes. Commercial, commercial forest is small and large scale.
And does that, would that override the, would that then take away the being irrevocably committed to uses in that sense, if you can't make a living on it?
It would be a factor, yes.
Other questions or comments from commissioners?
Just a comment.
Just a comment, just the fact that we're balancing all of these different factors. I'm not, I'm not hearing that there's any single weighted driving factor, it's all things considered. I'm just saying that to my fellow commissioners as I'm understanding it.
Okay.
Yeah, Kate, I think you're absolutely right. I think we got to just step back and just look at the wholeness to the thing and discuss it in that matter.
Okay, well, circle back to what the staff recommendation was that staff concluded that resource use on the subject parcel has become impracticable according to commonly understood definition and recommends the planning commission approve the request based on the exception area being irrevocably committed to other uses. So that is staff recommendation. Is there further discussion?
Mike, there's a big feedback on yours if you can mute it. So my take on it here, and this could be, are we in deliberations here, Lynn, we're good to just talk?
Yes.
That's it, so my opinion is it's going to be awful hard to make any money on that property. And if that makes it irrevocably committed, I think the soils, I'm I'm in agreeance with the fact that when you hear from a soil scientist that, in my opinion, has a lot more weight than just the map that was brought out in 1982 or any of the other stuff. So I feel the soils argument is, in my opinion, is correct. I think if the soil scientist says it's predominantly class seven or eight soils, then that's, I agree with Daniel's take on that. The only one that I'm concerned about is the irrevocably committed. And in my opinion, I mean, it's going to be awful hard to make money on a forest that's only 40 acres that, of which the majority of it was in the developed land and then the rest of it was in bad soil territory. So I don't know. I mean, I'm leaning towards approving it based on that, but I would love to hear somebody else tell me something that I'm completely off base and Russ, you're always good at that, so feel free to line me out.
I yeah, boy, you're not completely off base at all, Chris. I agree with your comments. I was going to add to that. So I'm looking at Wasco GIS during this discussion and I have the zoning turned on so I can see all the F2 land of which this parcel is part. And there are a great many parcels that are much smaller. There are many, many, many that are 10 acres or less. So I would just make the observation that if a criterion for rezoning is that it's not of a scale that's profitable, then there's an awful lot of F2 land that would meet that criterion. The other comment I was going to make is with regard to soil classification. And I agree with you, Chris, that when you get an expert in, probably that opinion is better than just the boilerplate that we had painted across the whole state and back in the 80s, for gosh sakes. So I do accept those findings. What I'm trying to understand is the ramifications of that across all of this F2 land of which this is a part because probably, I mean, what I do know is that this parcel is not the worst soil in the F2 land by any means. And so if soil classification is going to be a criterion for rezoning, there are probably a lot of our F2 lands that would meet that criterion also. So you know, I'm just leery of where that precedent might lead. I don't disagree with the conclusion that it's not profitable. I think many, many, many people that live in F2 land around here, around where Dave lives and where I live, I live in the same area, would absolutely come in and make that case very strongly that it's not profitable, that the soils are poor. So those things are true. What does it mean if that, if those are valid criteria for rezoning? I'm just trying to step back and get a grip of the precedent here. So that's part of what I'm trying to factor in as we deliberate this decision.
Commissioners, can I interject? Commissioner Shannon, you asked about forest uses and so, or forest lands. And that definition can be found in OAR 660 006 005, subsection seven, forest lands. So if you if you want to look that specific definition up, you can, so I apologize.
Any other comments, questions? Kate?
Yes, thank you. What Russ said.
Commissioner Willis, your audio is fading in and out.
Oh dear, okay, let me see. Can you hear me now, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There are many, many factors to consider here. I mean, impracticable or impractical is one of them, you know, soil condition is another. But I also find it very compelling, the testimony that was given by other folks who are concerned, you know, who have historical background with what's been happening on that land previously, decisions that had been made previously. All things considered, when we're weighing all of this out, plus coming an acknowledgement basically that on the first factor related to the 32%, the 11% and the 18% and the analysis that was done there. All of those factors to me weigh toward denying this. I don't think that we can just lean in on one factor. I think we need to look at the whole of it. And when I look at the whole of it, this decision that was originally made has concerned me since we made it. I voted in favor of it last time, but hearing this new evidence and I was concerned at the time. I felt that it was compelling at the time that we made this decision. We have a second chance, I take this really seriously. We have another chance to look carefully at this information. And in looking at it and I don't find it compelling, you know, to let this one.
We're losing your audio, Kate.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm, can you hear me now, okay?
Yes.
Okay, I, on looking at this anew from the last time that we looked at it, I am finding that it makes sense to deny this.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you. I think that really the only consideration to deny it is not what they discussed, what Kate was discussing, but primarily what Russ was, which kind of moves me, just steps me back from saying yes on this. And that is, you know, are we opening up Pandora's box here? And we'll have these 10 acres that are all scattered about, okay? Coming in with and using this for presidents, okay? So if there was some way that we can word this where that to make it where that it's, it has to, we just can't open it to make everything, all of a sudden, every one of these things are going to FF1 to FF2, okay? So that's the only thing that really concerns me about it, that I'm giving some thought here. But the rest of it is, is, we can probably discuss these things forever, but I think it's stepping back, looking at the wholeness to the thing. Yes, there's soils and yes, there's this and all sorts of things. But the only thing that gives me a pause is the, if we're establishing and going to open up Pandora's box on this thing. So that's what I'm thinking about.
Appreciate that. In general, each case stands on its own. Precedent isn't a factor, but certainly understand the concern. Now, there are numerous factors that are going into the consideration of being irrevocably committed. So those are the two areas of the OAR that Daniel focused on. The, whether it was physically developed exception or irrevocably committed. And it was staff's opinion that it was irrevocably committed based on multiple factors and not just soils. So that's just, that was just one of the considerations, so. All right, any other comments or questions?
Lynn, I would like to comment. I think that I totally agree with what Russ said and reiterate what Mike said. We've been down this road before, we know where it's headed. But if we don't stop this, we're going to have a floodgate of challenges to rezone all of those properties. We've got to step back and look at it as a whole.
Commissioner McIntyre, could I, I don't know if I'm in line, this is Willis again.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If you guys were caught, I agree, that's my concern as well. And we do need to look at the wholeness of it and we frankly didn't, my recollection, am I coming in okay, audio?
Yes.
Okay, my recollection of the original hearing was that we actually didn't have enough information at the time. And I remember that we did try to put in some language to say that the decision when it was at that time approved was only for this, as an, for this instance only. But it was only advisory and it wasn't anything that would, it, it will, I agree, it's going to, it's going to create a problem going forward, I think. And we did, there were some attempts made in that original hearing to address that very issue. But I don't think that it, it will not stop that from happening in the future, is my understanding. There's nothing we can put in here on the record that would stop it other than just denying this.
Well, every application would be considered on its own merits, so.
True, but if, if, I mean, if the considerations, if this has come before the commit, the set of facts are different in every case, but I mean, okay, the set of facts are different in every case, but we would have deliberated this and gone through in our mind. Are okay, so in terms of denying or approving, this sets absolutely, the case can continue to be made and come back to this commission or in future years, come back with a different set of facts that would go through this exact same balancing act, is that right?
Not sure I understand the question.
Well, we have two, we have two, we have two requirements under review here and a set of facts that have been given related to to land in a certain area here in Wasco County. Is there no, for the commissioners who are here or for future commissioners, there would be no revisiting how we deliberated in this case for future cases, is that right?
I don't know that.
Well, I feel like this case, Kate, is this case, I don't think we have to worry about the next case. I mean, we just need to concentrate on this one and not, I don't, in my opinion, that it, the case is for us. And that we might not see enough.
Well, then I'm one, I guess I'm wondering about the floodgate, the floodgate concern then.
Okay, I think, I think what's going to happen, this is assuming that we approve this, okay? And I think real respective, now I'm starting to put these and I'm looking things up at the same time, is that it's, it's, they will look at this, I mean, I would, you know, if I had something else. But we also have to remember is that the reasoning behind this is a long list of items there that they'd have to go through, which we would go through no matter what we wanted to do into planning by looking at past cases. So I think whether we pass this or not pass this, I think just because we're here talking about it, we're, you know, we're opening people's eyes and ears and wanting to take a look at these old zonings, which is fine. But is it going to open up floodgates? As long as we, and I think Lynn kind of hit it on the head, is that, look, we're not making this a present. Everything is its own case, okay? Now, does that mean it's, does it open up floodgates? No, I mean, it would or wouldn't, to make, so I don't think, like what Chris says, I don't think we should consider that. I think we should consider this on its own two legs. And if we keep that thought purely, then I think that we could come up with a good decision here.
I have, I have something, Lynn, too. For, from what I can gather from the staff report, it would appear that Daniel's recommending denial based on on the fact that it is irrevocably committed. And it only takes one criterion not being met to recommend denial of the request is what I'm gathering. Is that correct, Daniel?
That is correct, Commissioner. So staff may very well say we recommend approval of denial. And remember that you're making a recommendation to the VOC. So, but if you, based on all the testimony, believe that one of the criteria isn't necessarily met, then you can very well recommend the not. Does that make sense?
It definitely does. And I, and my point being, I feel the soils, my take is I feel the soils was met. I feel that it's right there. But I don't necessarily feel confident that the irrevocable commitment is, has been met. And that's where I'm confused there on that. So I would lean towards if staff is telling me that they're not, that it wasn't met, then I would lead towards taking staff's recommendation on that as opposed to going on my own.
Well, staff recommended approval based on the exception area being irrevocably committed. Correct, Daniel?
That is correct, but Commissioner Shannon's underlying question was if one, you as a commission believe that based on testimony given from either party, from staff, you believe that one of the criteria isn't necessarily met, then recommend the not.
Okay.
So it is staff's opinion that it has met the requirements on the, I thought you were saying it, but had not met the irrevocably committed requirements.
The recommendation for the physically exception or physically developed exception was a recommendation of denial. The staff believes that based on the original record, based on the new evidence submitted, that a recommendation of approval should be given to the VOC based for the irrevocably committed exception.
This is Commissioner Davis. I think that based on the amount of work that's gone through this thing and the more I read this in great detail, I think Daniel has done a terrific job. My feeling is to, you know, take their recommendations on those.
Okay, any further comments or discussion?
Have thought on these separately, Ben? I vote on these separately then.
No.
I think we should.
You're voting to approve the application.
I think we should vote on twenty-five and then we should vote on twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, there's a lot of feedback. I can't, could not understand that, Vicky.
I think we should vote on the number twenty-five separately and then vote on twenty-eight separately, just for the record.
I don't think you can do that.
Yeah. Daniel, can you clarify what we need to do here? We don't need to do that, do we?
This is, well, I provided the options for you. Um, and under uh, planning commission options C, you can recommend approval of um, one and then recommend denial of another. It's the, two separate issues, same application.
Okay. So you, you're saying there should be a vote on zero zero two five and a separate vote on zero zero two eight or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion pertaining to OAR six six zero four zero zero two five?
Mike, when you unmute, it gets everybody big feedback.
Go ahead. I move that we deny on twenty-five.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Okay. And we'll have a motion on OAR six six oh zero zero four zero zero two eight regarding um, the exception area of being irrevocably committed.
I move that we deny that move also.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion?
The irrevocably committed, that's the one that Daniel thinks it was.
He recommended approval. Vicky is suggesting disapproval.
Okay.
Vicky has made a motion to disapprove it, contrary to staff recommendation. Kate has seconded. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion to disapprove the request signified by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Post, say no, no?
No.
No.
True. Sorry, for the, for the record, Commissioner Davis, how did you vote?
This is Commissioner Davis. I voted no.
Um, Chair McIntyre, this is Jency. Could I, could I have um, a call of all of those votes, please?
Okay. The motion to disapprove the request contrary to staff recommendations, Vicky motioned and seconded and um, you wanna know how, who voted in favor of that motion?
Yes, please.
Raise your hands. Who voted in favor of that motion to deny the request?
Me.
Russ? Kate?
Vicky, yes. Vicky.
Vicky? Okay. The rest voted nay. So that's we got three for, three for the motion. Jency?
I have Commissioner Willis and Commissioner Ashley as voting in favor of the motion. I have Commissioner Shannon and Commissioner Davis voting no. Um, I need to hear about Commissioner Hargrave and then also Chair McIntyre.
I voted no.
Russ voted.
Commissioner, Jency, Commissioner Hargrave voted for Vicky's motion. So it was three and three.
This is Commissioner Willis. I voted with Vicky's motion on both, which was to deny.
All right, what do we do with a tie vote?
In the past, we have sent it to the county court that way. No recommendation, tied vote.
So you're welcome to send it to, because it is a recommendation, not an approval, you're welcome to send it to the board as a tie. And you're welcome to continue deliberating uh, and see if you can come to some consensus. You're also uh, able to issue a continuance at this time.
Do any commissioners wish to continue deliberation?
I, I was I was gonna suggest that we send it to the county commissioners as a tie vote.
Okay. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay. I guess that, that's how it will go to the Board of Commissioners then. All right. Thank you, everybody. That was difficult. Um, all right, let's see here. All right, then a decision-making hearing before the Board of Commissioners will be scheduled and notifications will be sent per the requirements of Wasco County Land Use and Development Ordinance, Chapter Two Development Approval Procedures. Okay, at this time, we will move on to the bylaws amendments, which surprisingly appeared on the agenda. We haven't seen these in several years.
I'm seeing Commissioner Shannon's hand, Chair.
Pardon? Oh, yes, Chris, sorry.
We have enough people that if I have to step out, that there's still a quorum.
Yes.
I was gonna actually recommend Chair, um, in the interest of time, because we are over, that we defer this until January's hearing.
Okay, what, what else might be on the agenda in January?
Thank you so much, Kelly.
Um, we potentially have a hearing um, related to an RV park in January.
All right.
I moved to table it until January's meeting.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Agree.
Agreed.
All in favor, say aye.
I agree.
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, do, uh,
Can I have a second on that motion? I have Chair, or Commissioner Shannon move to table it and who was the second?
I think Russ. Yes.
Sun RV Park is second.
Okay, Director, do you have uh, anything you want to discuss with the commission?
I'm happy to keep it short and sweet, Chair. Thank you. Um, just wanted to give you the status of recruitment. We have interviews for a co-compliance officer this week. We think that will conclude um, our recruitment for co-compliance officer. We'll be having somebody start within the next month. Um, we also have an appointment to have a prospective associate planner come uh, job shadow us. So we're hopeful that we may also have an additional capacity in the current planning program. Um, I don't have anything else to report, um, that can't wait until January. I know everybody's had, had a long, hard hearing. So um, if you'd like a further update about what's going on in the department, feel free to give me a call or email. Thank you so much, Chair and Commissioners.
Appreciate it. All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Shannon moves to adjourn.
Second.
Favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your hard work and
which I've heard before.
I'm sorry, what?
Good job, Daniel. That was a lot of work, man. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Daniel.
Yeah, really. Good, good work. Very thorough.
Everybody have a good Christmas and a happy New Year.
I'm sorry, I'm not smarter and it doesn't, it's not as easy for me to understand, Daniel.
Oh, you got a great beard though, so we forgive ya. Now, happy holidays, everybody.
I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for Russ to grow his out.
Um, you haven't met my wife. It's not gonna happen.
Bye all, Happy New Year.
I'd do it.
You guys.
All right, thanks.